The June 12th Planning Commission Meeting. Can please have a roll call?
Yes, certainly. Commissioner Chioni.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Bridge.
Here.
And Commissioner Braxton.
Here.
All right, I would like to make a usual reminder that we also have a phone number that people can call if they're following from home. The phone number is 805-875-8201. Again, 805-875-8201.
Sorry to interrupt Chair, but we have been having some problems with the phone. We'll see if it works, but you could still do the usual, but just wanted to be aware that we might have some challenges.
Okay, well, hopefully, we can be okay. All right, so we're gonna go to oral communications. This is a chance to speak about any item or an item that is not on the agenda. So if you're here to speak about something that's on the agenda, this is not the time to do so. But if you are, you have other concerns, or there's anything you want to bring up to the commission, this is your chance. So I'm gonna open for oral communication. And see no one rises. Is there anyone on the phone?
No one on the phone.
So I'm gonna close oral communication and move to the consent calendar, where we'll be approving the minutes of the Lompoc Planning Commission meeting of May 8, 2024. Someone wanna make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from May 8th meeting.
Any second?
My second.
All right, all the people say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Have a discussion.
On the minutes?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. I tried to get there.
All right, so the motion is, I guess, canceled. Please go ahead.
Just hold for a moment. So on page 15, Commissioner Gonzalez made a statement there. And my understanding of what the statement's intent was, which I think is really important, it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th, 1 with a heading on it, starts with stated essential environmental justice. I believe your intent there was to say that while we address the environmental justice, it could be applied to the entire city, and that the city, that therefore would be addressing the environmentally or the economically sensitive areas. Do you believe that said that? If you believe that correctly reflects your thoughts, then I'm good. But I just, it was a really important point to me that the environmental justice component, yes, it has to address the component that they've identified, but by addressing the whole city, we there in fact would be addressing that area. And that's what I thought you meant at the time I heard it.
Give me a second just to read this paragraph.
Does that make sense what I just?
Yes. Yes, what you said was correct.
Well, then I just would like the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect that.
If you could restate, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you could restate exactly what you think is incorrect, you kind of summarized it, but I don't think I'm fully seeing what you are mentioning.
Certainly, I can...
Could Commissioner Gonzalez speak just because it's from her words? That would be great. What here is incorrect, Commissioner Gonzalez?
So what I was trying to state in that section there was that when we were, the problems that we had come up with for that area were applied to the whole city in general, which in that sense also applied to the area alone.
Yeah, I see the last sentence. Let me just read it. It says, "But what we've come to see is our four major problems are addressed to the whole city in general and not necessarily just that area." How do you think we have to go back and listen? How do you think that that should have been said? Because it made sense to us that, that statement. Or if you just want to leave it as is, that's, I just want to clarify.
I would, you hadn't worded it before.
I just wanted to make sure we had an understanding.
Yeah, so just leave it how it is.
And maybe after, the third item is the environmental justice, maybe after my short presentation, if there's something that you want to like clarify, that would probably be a good time on item three.
I'll look, think.
Okay, so Commissioner Bridge, so you would like this discussion to be reflected in today's minutes, right? Not, not go back and amend the... Okay, so...
Affirmative.
Okay, cool. So we can go ahead and approve, again, we're gonna redo the motion, I think.
I make a motion to approve the May 8th minutes.
And a second?
My second.
Okay, all the people say aye?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved for zero, but again, we're gonna put this discussion into today's minutes. All right, so I'm gonna, let's open with the public hearing item number one, which is an amendment to the condition of approval for an approved subdivision map, LOM 475. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Chair Commissioners, I'm presenting a maybe, there we go, presenting a request from Lori Pearson, the project applicant, for planning commission consideration of an amendment to remove the requirement for minimum residential home size as contained in the previously approved tentative parcel map, conditions of approval, condition number seven. The project is located at 1301 East Hickory Avenue, which is Lot 1 of LOM 475. The site is approximately 15,246 square feet. Surrounding uses include single-family dwellings to the north, east, and south, and there's a vacant lot, which is parcel number four, to the east, to the west, my apologies. Access to the property is granted through an easement. On February 14, 1994, the Planning Commission adopted Resolution 94-04, approving a tentative parcel map, LOM 475, to subdivide three parcels into four residential lots. Lot, of the four lots, parcels two and three of LOM 475 were developed with single-family homes. Parcels one and four remain vacant, developable land. On December 19 of 2023, the Building Division received an application for a building permit to construct a 1,040-square-foot manufactured, single-family dwelling with a 400-square-foot carport, detached carport on Lot 1 of LOM 475. On January 25 of 2024, the Planning Division provided corrections on the building permit application indicating that the proposed dwelling size of 1,040 square feet did not meet the minimum dwelling size requirements of 2,250 square feet, as listed in condition of approval number seven for LOM 475. The plan check corrections also state that planning commission review and approval for architectural review would be required for lots one and four, as required by conditions of approvals number one and seven for LOM 475. On April 10, 2024, Planning Division received an application to amend the conditions of approval for the approved permit of LOM 475. The application was deemed complete for processing on May 2, 2024. Condition of approval number seven for LOM 475 reads, "As part of the parcel map, architectural review will be required for residences on Lot 1 and Lot 4. Architectural review shall be conducted by the Planning Commission. Residences shall not be higher than one story above adjacent grade. All areas and decks below the house shall be at least partially enclosed, and dwelling size shall not be less than 2,250 square feet." The proposal is to amend the condition to remove the minimum dwelling size on Lot 1. Excuse me, would still be required on, yes, so would be removed on Lot 1, and would still be required on Lot 4. So the amended is the same condition stating that the dwelling size shall not be less than 2,250 square feet on Lot 4, which is the vacant lot to the west, but would not be required on Lot 1. Architectural review by the Planning Commission would remain in effect on both lots, lots 4 and 1. The proposed amendment is to delete the minimum dwelling size requirement of 2,250 square feet from Lot 1 of condition approval number seven. The applicant has stated that the amendment is needed to reduce the amount and cost of grading that would be needed to accommodate a larger dwelling and not being able to afford a larger dwelling. I have included the slide with the proposed slight plan. It is included to provide the commission with the general concept. Architectural review of the proposed project by the Planning Commission is still required. This is just to give you a general idea. The existing conditions of the vacant lot, this is standing on, there is a section of concrete that goes across the easement. This is looking to the west and looking to the north. Looking to the northeast and then looking to the east, out on the property a little. The existing neighborhood. 1317 East Hickory is on the left. It's the White House in the back of the photo. It's a 3,000-square-foot home. The home on the right is a newly built house. 1325 East Hickory is 5,296 square feet. 1300 East Hickory, which is adjacent to the easement to get to 1301 East Hickory, is 2,132 square feet. 1313 East Hickory is 2,213 square feet. 1320 East Hickory, which is down the street, and they have a lot of lovely landscaping, is 3,636 square feet. The photo on the bottom shows the private driveway, which is in front of 1313 East Hickory, and that you have to cross that to get to 1301 East Hickory. The action is exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15061b3, review for exemption of the California Environmental Quality Act. No further environmental review is required for this action, and a notice of exemption will be filed for the project following the Planning Commission's actions. Two resolutions have been prepared for the commission this evening. Resolution 1004, perens 24, approving the amendment, and resolution 100624, denying the amendment, or the commission may provide alternative direction. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Chair, if I could just add one small little point. There may be a lot of discussion tonight about design, and potentially where the home would sit, parking, access. Tonight, the commission, just want to remind the commission that you're only looking at the amendment to that condition, condition seven. Even though it's good to have a lot of background, or there'll probably be a lot of discussion, it's only that Lot 1 and the minimum size of the dwelling, 2,250 square feet. So just wanted to remind us that that's the only request before you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I open it for public comment, are there any questions? Commissioner Bridge?
Could you put the spec up? So I saw a lot of pictures there, which were cool.
That one?
Yeah, I'm just, you rattled off a bunch of addresses and adjacent houses, and could you tell me which is Lot 4? I don't understand the lots on that drawing, sorry.
The original project, LOM 475, took three lots and reconfigured them into four. This was Lot 1, Lot 2 was back here, Lot 3 was over here on Mango, and Lot 4 is this vacant parcel over here.
So 4 is to the left as I look at it. And where was Lot, the other two again?
Lot 1, Lot 2 is up here. It fronts Cypress.
So Lot 2 actually goes out onto Cypress?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's Lot 2. And then that long, kind of narrow thing that looks like a lot, is the, that's the easement?
Yes.
That's how they get to that lot from Olive? No? Okay, so how do they get to that lot?
This...
I don't see Hickory continuing there.
Hickory's right here. This part of Hickory on, in front of these houses was abandoned, and it's become a private access driveway, and there is an easement that goes across the front of this piece of property, onto this piece of property.
Okay, so the, so that's a frontage of a house there. And what address did you call that?
I just had it. Hold on.
Sorry to be...
This one right here is 1313. And then 1301, and I don't remember the address of parcel 4.
That's all right. That kind of answers my question. So there's an easement there. Could you go to the slope line drawing that you had up there? That, can you, it's been a long time since I've looked at topo maps. So do you have a feel for the back half of that property from the house, or the going towards the top, however you want to consider it, what the slope is there? When we looked at the picture of the lot looking, I guess that would be north, it dropped off. Do you, do you know where, is it on that dotted line that goes across the middle that it drops off?
It, it's around here. It, this is flatland, and then it drops here, and I believe the slope percentage was around 27%. That was in the original staff...
27%?
That was in the original staff report that was attached.
Okay, and?
And here is, wait. So here's that driveway that you can see from the aerial, and then, then it starts to slope. I didn't... So this is standing out kind of towards the end of that flat area. This is where it starts to slope.
Okay, and is, I tried to read, I didn't think I was gonna be here tonight, but I tried to read, Brian, your information on the general plan about the slope. And I remember seeing something about 20%, that it's not expected to be built on that slope, or did I misinterpret that, or?
We could get into that, we can get into that a little later, but I am trying to focus on just the, you know, request tonight. They would have to meet some requirements in the zoning code that we updated in 2020, approved in 2019, 2020. So we could pull that up in a little bit. But it is very steep, but you could still, obviously, if they did substantial grading, retaining walls and things like that, you could still...
They would be able to build on it.
Yeah, yeah.
That answers my questions. Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, so we're gonna open for public comment. In the interest of making this meeting efficient and focused, we're gonna put a timer, a three-minute timer, for any any comment. So I think you have the timer on the screen, right? It will be, put it there. There you go. Did they say two? No, I'm... No, three, three minutes. We're gonna limit it to three minutes. Sorry, I apologize if it came out weird, but no, three minutes per comment. And yeah, we usually let the applicant speak first. Are they here? All right, please. You got, sorry, we gotta come to the podium, yeah. Because there's a microphone, and yeah, so we can hear what, record what you're saying, yeah. And please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Whitney Del Real. Ms. Pearson is my client. She is the owner of 1301 East Hickory. We've been working on this project for several years, trying to get an approval for a single-family dwelling for a manufactured home on the site. We are trying to meet all of the requirements that we possibly can. The problem that we're finding here is that this, the slope is substantial, at nearly 30% sloping down. So to minimize grading, we'd like to propose a smaller dwelling unit. Unfortunately, a two-story home isn't allowed, so we're trying to use the graded pad that we can, while still meeting the requirements for our slope setbacks on all sides for the slope stability, without incurring any kind of financial burden that is unreasonable for the client, or having to put things like pylons or anything crazy structural. But the home will be built to HUD standards, and we will meet all the other requirements for that. Do you have anything to say?
I just want to say that I'm not there to block...
Just one second.
Oh, I'm Lori Pearson.
Yeah, we didn't, did you start the clock?
We didn't start it, just because it was the applicant's turn to just explain the proposal, but we could, if you wanted to...
Oh, okay, no, I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page. I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. I'm Lori Pearson, and I have been saving to have a retirement home in Lompoc. My brother lives up here. And I'm gonna be 70, and I'm a little nervous. But I, I've been working on this project for a long time, and I've tried to do everything I can for two years to make this happen. I take care of my 92-year-old mother, and I run a business. And I'm just hoping that I can be part of Lompoc, and not to interfere with anybody's views or create any problems for the city or the surrounding neighbors. And it's a small house, but the, the platform on the top, if you go up there, it's very small, with the restrictions from the edge, you know, it's 20 feet back, so it, it has to be pretty much 1,040 square foot was all that we could get on there. I just hope that it happens. I really want to live up here. And my brother lives here, and hope I can be a part of it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Good evening. Would you like this card?
Yes, please. And also, yeah, please state your name so that it can be... Perfect, perfect.
Good evening. My name is Susan Inch, and I live at 1320 East Hickory, which is a corner to this location. The house is listed here at 36,000 square, 3,600 square feet, 36,000. Okay, that's the whole town. No. So I'm here, I've lived there for many years, and I think it's important, and I appreciate the applicant's concern and all of that, but with, the applicant knew what the conditions were, and I believe we should deny this request for an amendment because we all in the neighborhood have built and met the requirements of the conditions for approval. And that's to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood, and I believe those lots could be built on and still meet these conditions. We went through all of that in 1994 to be sure that would be possible. So I would like to request that it be denied based on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You do, I do, I mean, I do. Please restate your name for the record, though, at the microphone, please. Thanks.
I'm Carol Burgess, and I live on Hickory, 1317 East Hickory. And I read the staff report, and that was really extensive, and a lot of preparation. And there were a couple points in there that I'd like to bring up. First is, well, the pictures, you saw some of the pictures that were on the website, the City of Lompoc website, and just seeing the surrounding homes. All these homes are attractively designed, custom homes, and they really don't remind me of the proposed dwelling. And the other thing I'd like to bring up, that was from the staff report, is the square footage map from the Santa Barbara County Assessor's website. And if you look at the proposed...
And that's one of the attachments in the staff report. If you want to refer to that...
Sorry, Attachment 8. Thank you. So my time is moving on. Can we stop it? It's Attachment 8. It's, if you can see it. Here's a sample right here. I think it's a, it's almost at the, well, it's not quite at the end. Do you have it? Oh, great, okay. So if you look at that, that gives the square footage of the dwellings around this area. And this proposed dwelling is much smaller than everything on this map. Okay, just in conclusion, on February 14, 1994, the Lompoc Planning Commission established the square foot requirement for 1301 East Hickory. And my husband and I were actively involved in that. And we just want to note that we really wish to maintain the present size requirement as it preserves the character of our community and neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who wants to speak next?
Hi, my name is Darrell Burgess. I am her husband. We live at the same address, 1317 East Hickory Avenue. We have lived here since 1992. I, like Mrs. Pearson, wished to come to California also to work and retire. I am from Michigan. We are, we came directly from Detroit, and I assumed a position as an internal medicine specialist for Sansom Santa Barbara Medical Foundation Clinic, from which I retired in 2017 or 18, something like that. But my point is, this is our dream too. And I worked long and hard to get here. It cost me a lot of money to get here, to establish my practice here, and to buy this house, and to landscape this house, and take care of this house, and pay all the taxes on this house. I picked this neighborhood on purpose because I liked the neighborhood. I researched it. I've been around the country researching other places to live, and I would have moved there if I liked them. But I like it here, and I like this particular street. This is a very unique street. It feels open and spacious, and it's friendly. And most of our neighbors have been here for over, for decades, actually. The last one, only a few months, but he just built his home, but the rest of us for a long time. These are special homes. These aren't modular homes. These aren't 1,040-square-foot homes. The one next to me was owned by the Bodgers. You've probably heard that name before. The Bodgers from the Bodger Seed Company. Well, that was their house. Joan Johnson now owns that home, and she had a travel business here in town. These are special homes, and I believe it's quite a bit larger than what your square footage is. You might want to check that. She has a walkout basement too, and possibly that wasn't added in the square footage. wasn't added in the square footage. The one across the street was built and owned by the original Hollensteins, added in Lorraine. And they were big contractors here in town, and they did a lot of earthmoving and that kind of thing. These are special, unique, custom homes. The one next door to it was built by a successful pharmacist from, I think he was a Filipino, and this was a while ago, that's Susan's home, and they mentioned thirty-six hundred square feet. And then there's our home, which we acquired very happily new, and we're on a half an acre, most of these are on a half an acre or more, not all of them. And then there's Tony's home, he's here in attendance, but chooses not to speak, five thousand square feet, next door to mine, so I'm gonna have a five thousand square foot brand-new home, mine, which is actually thirty-three hundred square feet, not three thousand, Jones', which I bet it, I think it's closer to three thousand if you add it all up. And then I'm gonna have a one thousand forty square foot mobile home next to me. That doesn't fit, and it doesn't fit for the community either.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one rises, I'm gonna do just one final check, to see if anyone is on the phone.
No one is on the phone.
All right, we're gonna then close the public comment, and start discussing. Commissioner Bridge.
All right, I have a question. Is, I mean, we've been through this, all these state requirements, and I don't pretend to understand them all. Are there any state housing requirements, mandates that apply here regarding our ability to approve or disapprove a particular house size?
That's a really good question. Well, I wanted to start, Commissioner Bridge, by saying that before we amended our code in twenty nineteen, we did have some minimum requirements for a dwelling size, based on the number of bedrooms, but that was deleted, to make the code a little more flexible. Even though the state has continued to just hammer us with removing barriers to the construction of new housing, our housing plan is almost complete, we're gonna be re-submitting again here shortly. Even today, if, if this type of restriction was, the planning commission wanted it, per our city attorney, we could put that type of restriction. The state would probably, well, they would frown upon it, but I think in this situation, we could still do it. But that's, as you know, we've been talking about this for over a year, we are, the state of California is moving towards more flexible regulation, more streamlined. It's very, very rare that even a single-family home would have these type of restrictions, and especially design review, so this is just the first part. Depending on what happens, they still have to go through a design review, which for a single home is very rare. So you, it is legal to either keep it, or delete it.
I have one more question. These, these conditions that have been applied, or were applied, would they be overridden by an ADU?
And what, what do you mean by overridden?
Could Mr. Burgess, and I don't mean to pick on him, but could Mr. Burgess put an ADU on his lot?
Absolutely. You just have to have a primary unit, once you have a primary unit, and even the applicant, after they build this home, if they wanted to do an ADU, we would have to allow an ADU, as well as the entire neighborhood. Citywide, you have to have a primary dwelling, and you could still do an ADU.
So independent of any conditions, that the house has to be a certain size?
Yeah, you just have to establish the primary dwelling, that's the most important.
So then, that restricts, the condition would be only to the primary dwelling, and not to that ADU?
That's a good question. We do allow, if it's detached, we do allow up to a twelve hundred square foot ADU, which begs the question, that would be larger than what they're proposing, but we do have to allow, well, actually, it's, we have to allow up to eight hundred, but the maximum is twelve hundred. I, I don't really want to get into an ADU discussion, because it gets a little complicated, but the, the short answer is, they could do an ADU, once they have a primary dwelling.
So, just to clarify, just for everybody to understand, any one of these lots could come in tomorrow, propose an ADU of eight hundred square feet, and the city would essentially have to accept that?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, this is obviously, I think we closed the, sorry, we closed the public comment at this point. Yeah, it's, 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 it's obviously a very complicated issue. The neighborhood, we saw the houses that are on the neighborhood, they are, it is true, they are pretty significant, and they are, there, there certainly are, are houses that have a certain feel, and they give a certain feel to that, to that neighborhood. I just, can you bring back, again, the topo map, topographic map? Okay. So I, I just, I struggle to understand how, thirty years ago?
Yeah.
Thirty years ago, we could have put a, or the, the commission could have put a twenty-two-hundred feet condition on a lot like that, because clearly, a two-hundred and two, a twenty-two-fifty home does not fit there.
No, and that's where I'm kind of concerned, that's thirty years ago standards, right? So after the exercise that we've just gone on, the journey over the last year, right, of how can we build more homes in Lompoc, and we're looking at parcels of property, where we're looking to put multiple-unit dwellings on a house, right, where we're taking a lot that size, right, and potentially stacking it, and putting six units there, right? That's where I'm, I'm struggling. I mean, I see, I, I understand that, that this was thirty years ago, and that limit was implemented then, but I mean, now we're seeing footprints of homes downsized, right, to meet that. And I totally, I totally understand it, I live in Old Town, and I fought tooth and nail, like, I have a weed shop across my house, that's been in my family for almost a hundred years, right? So had to eat it, had to digest it, had to accept it. But yeah, I'm, I'm struggling, I mean, I, for the applicant, I feel, I just feel that there's always opportunity for an individual to build. I know that the lot size would decrease, and I know it's a pre-modular home, I don't think it will look ugly, you know, I'm just, these are just my terms, not saying that it will be, right, but I think it would add, you know, to whatever of the community there, maybe to blend in, I mean, we don't know what, Brian, we don't know what it's gonna look like, right, they gotta go through architectural.
It is very, yeah, it is very hard for, I, I think it's a little bit of a disservice for us to make a decision on this now, without knowing how it's gonna look like, or it's gonna, how, how it's designed, how it's, I mean, there is, there is, it is an important part of this decision, because yes, if someone's putting a trailer in there, okay, no. But if someone is building a nice, albeit little, house, but that looks, you know, like, like it could enhance that vacant lot, then it could maybe be a different issue, a different, a different, it could sway us differently, right? So just to be like, here, okay, to ask us to, to make a decision based on just the size alone, I've seen a lot of, like, small houses that are really cute and beautiful, and, and make, make it, and have a feel, of a community feel, and I also saw a lot of big houses that are ugly, so, yeah, I mean.
Chair, members of the commission, I, I'm just gonna make a suggestion, just to kind of open up some possibilities. So one thing that you could do, and I think you'd want to open it up for additional public comment on this idea, is you could ask for the applicant to submit the design review, and you could look at the amendment and the design review together simultaneously. I don't think that would necessarily be anything bad, you know, the applicant's gonna have to pay the fees for the design review, submit the full package, drawing package, and then you could look at those together and make your decision, but just remember that, depending on your decision, the applicant might spend a significant amount of money to do something that may or may not get approved if you don't approve this amendment. So in a way, it's fitting for this to come first, before she invests more money, but you could look at them at the same time.
And I think that's where we're kind of getting stuck, because it's gonna go through another review, the design review, and yes, it is gonna be small, and you may say it's out of place, and I don't want to say anything bad, but, because I've seen the five thousand square foot house, it's beautiful, but you can also say that's out of place. The other homes around here are only three thousand square feet.
I wholeheartedly agree, and, and what I think I see, the broader picture is, is that I own that lot, and say I've had that lot, and been paying taxes on it for fifteen or twenty years, and I'm ready to retire. I mean, I have that right now in Delaware, right? If I were to go back and retire from base, and they basically tell me, hey, you gotta build La Creme La Creme here, in this beach town, I would say, okay, I'm selling my lot, because it's not, you're not fair, right? Because, and I, I get that there was this standard, and now they're asking for this. Well, I just feel that we owe it as a service to at least allow this to move forward, and then when it gets to that design review, then it'd be a blend of, hey, let's try to meet the facade of the neighborhood. But I mean, that's the struggle we have in Lompoc right now, I mean, like, there's nowhere to build, and when you're ready to build, it's, there's all these stipulations.
Brian, I have a couple questions. Your suggestion was a good suggestion, is there, the architectural review, is that a planning commission review?
Yes, absolutely, that's the condition, if Sheridan can put that back up, you are the review authority for that. So there it is, right there, architectural review required, conducted by the planning commission. So I, you know, I have.
Let me, let me finish my questions before you, because I, I understand what you're saying. A lot was said about the historic nature of this neighborhood. I don't know if it met the fifty-year mark, and I'm not even sure the fifty-year mark is in the code anymore. If it went into an architectural review, would the historic neighborhood factor play into that?
No. I'm not trying to be.
No, I'm, that's a statement.
Yeah, I'm not trying to, to downgrade the facts that were, and the opinions that were given tonight, it is a very nice neighborhood, so I would never disagree with that. From the city's standpoint, there aren't anything necessarily on a registry, it's not, you know, historic in that sense, like, I guess, if someone wanted to, because the Bodgers are a very well-known family, and very prosperous in the valley here, they, they could possibly apply for some sort of destination, but, but they, the fact is, they haven't, so that's just kind of the neighborhood perspective, but it's not anything like in the books, it's not anything that's been filed through local government, state, or federal.
Okay, well, I, I'm not sure how we'd word it, but I would make a motion that this get, they get delayed, or reassigned, to come back with at least an architectural review, so we can see what the house looked like. I don't know that we have to have full engineering and grading plans, but I think a field.
I mean, yeah, I mean, if it is the, if it's, if it's the, the look of the neighborhood that we're trying to preserve here, we need to see how this thing looks. I mean, there's no way around.
So however, that needs to be worded, from a legal standpoint, I, I would ask for some help from the lawyer.
So Commissioner Bridge, you're, you're asking to make a motion to continue this item, with the condition that we return with an architectural review?
Yes.
Is that a motion? Is it, are we ready for a second, or do you?
I don't, no, I don't want to continue with that.
Yeah, I, I, I wholeheartedly feel it's a disservice, because if we're gonna now extend this weeks and months to another meeting, which could be three months down the road, right? If, if I'm the applicant, and I'm in her shoes, and I'm working with, trying to develop the floor plans for this, right, I need to understand what my square foot of being able to build this house. So it's not fair to the applicant, right, to continue to wait for that information, because at that time, that's costing money and lead time. So I feel that we make a motion, that we, you know, that we accept staff's recommendation to allow the square footage to be reduced to the, the value that's needed, and at, the next giving meeting, or whenever available, that staff brings back the architectural review, and so it goes twofold, that we can have a discussion with regards to that, to meet the needs of the neighborhood, for look and feel.
Motion.
Just, just to keep these motions in line, we're gonna need to have a vote on Commissioner Bridge's motion first.
I think it died for lack of a second.
There was no second.
There was no second, okay.
On that motion.
So then, we can move on to Commissioner Braxton's motion.
Do you want to, do you want to restate, maybe, the motion?
I don't remember all that now.
Let, let me just add, just one quick point, before you say that motion. Depending on what's decided tonight, whether to approve or deny the amendment, when the design review comes forth, you could add conditions to the design review, for example, maybe the aesthetics, maybe the architecture doesn't blend in with the neighborhood, or maybe there's other things, you have the ability to add conditions to that. So in theory, you could even, you could delete, and then add later, depending on what you see, so, to take action tonight. So I just want to, like, throw different things out there, so you know that there is another review that's coming, where you could condition it. So, go ahead.
All right, so do we have, do you want to restate the motion, so we can keep it tidy?
Yeah, make a motion that we adopt Resolution one zero zero four twenty-four, approving an amendment for the conditions of approval for Lompoc seventy-five, and then, for the, to be brought back with, yeah, with conditions, so just to accept it.
Do we have a mo, a second?
I have a second.
I'm sorry, but this is not the time for, for public comment.
You, you. I have a question. And, 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 like, a lot on this.
Okay.
I want that. You know, the, the.
The public comment period, right?
I'm sorry.
If you want to reopen it, you can, but right now, we need the comments to go into the microphone, you'd have to reopen the public.
No, 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 I'm sorry, sir, I have not, I have not reopened the public comment. I'm sorry, no. So, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, let's do a roll call, roll call vote on this one, please.
When you have a motion, a second, that opens it up for discussion, and I'd like to have a whole discussion of that, if that's okay.
Okay, well.
Right now, we need to vote on the motion.
We have a motion, and a second, and it's time to vote, but I mean.
I thought, when you had a motion and a second, that opens it up for discussion. Is that not true?
We can, we can postpone the motion, have a discussion, and then reintroduce the motion again.
All right, all right.
You misunderstood the rules.
Okay, so. Okay, so, do we have a motion and a second, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay. I, I thought you guys were gonna vote a different way, and, and are gonna just say ayes and no's, so-
We will, but I wanna do it one by one.
Yeah, on that motion, Commissioner Choney?
Nay.
Okay. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bridg?
Nay.
And Commissioner Braxton?
Yes.
All right, so we have a split.
So that motion fails, it's a tie.
Fail, so we can have now more discussion.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to judge-
No, no, it's okay, it's okay.
I just, I'm used to a first, a second, then discussion.
The discussion needs to happen before the second, but okay.
Okay. Well, you don't have a motion until you have a second.
No, you have the motion, you just don't have the second to the motion. The motion was stated.
Okay.
But anyway, it fails, so now we can't have it.
Here's my problem. The reason I voted no, is I have now experienced with the government enough cases where I go down a path, thinking that there's a compromise here, and then, three-minute meetings later, or state law changes, or, and then, I don't get a second chance, another bite. And so, I'm fearful that we approve it, and then, two minutes later, and actually, when they bring it back for the architectural review, will not be up to us. Yeah, I don't think it'll be up to Brian, I think it'll be up to the engineers, who actually put the plan together and re-submit it. So that could be six months from now, and six months from now, all these rules could be out of the window, because we've, we've experienced it in the, just what we went through with the, the general plan, and we think we can take a step, but we get told, no, you can't legally do that anymore. So, I'm very nervous that we approve it, or, you know, do something else other than delay it, and say, bring it back with the package. So that's why I voted no.
Yeah, and the reason I voted no is, again, because I don't feel like we can make a decision on this without, without the architectural review. It's, it's the look of a, of a neighborhood that's been questioned here, that's been discussed here, and to me, I need to see how this thing looks. If, if it looks ugly, then I have to agree with the neighbors.
But if-
If it, if it doesn't, then-
But if it looks ugly, then we're not gonna approve it, so it's not gonna go in anyway.
I, I think we're completely overlooking what Brian said the intent of tonight's meeting was. We're totally reading into it too much, the intent, tonight's meeting was not to get into the look, the feel, what color blinds it's gonna have, what color shades, what color paint. The whole intent of tonight's meeting was to downgrade the size of the lot. That's the whole intent. That's the whole premise of why we're here, sitting in this room. It's not to sit here and talk about, is it gonna look rectangular, is it gonna be oblong, is it gonna have rectangular shades? It, that's where I'm trying to wrap my head around. We're doing this applicant an extreme disservice, by not accepting this.
I think we're just doing it out of, out of sequence, then. I think that this meeting was called too early.
Well, which my personal opinion is, is some decisions on this dais were made with all intent, right? Because it's, this is about fair and equal. An applicant wants to move forward in procuring a home for retirement, and all we're doing is a disservice.
And how long has this lot been empty? We need homes. This is her trying to build the home in Lompoc.
You know, we're sitting here making decisions for people who live in certain neighborhoods, where we just went through this whole review, months, years, they don't have a say. Right? We're sitting here driving that, hey, guess what? You live in this part of town, and we're now driving and dictating that across the street from your house, which may be a 3,200 square foot home, you're now gonna have eight units, you're gonna have condos. They didn't have a say. It was, it was forced on them by the state. So, I think that's where we have to really just reflect and say, okay, hey, the intent of tonight's meeting was to downgrade the lot requirement to this size, and allow the individual to move forward in the process. Right? Because we're all told, we're stopped in stores, that the processes in this town take forever. So all we're doing now is adding to that process of delay.
Well, I think, I think that two wrongs don't make a right, and I know how I felt when the condition you described was put on the city. You will do this, it's a state rule. So, I don't think you, the fact that that wrong occurred, in my opinion, can be used as justification for doing another wrong. And I, I personally think the character of Lompoc is important, and to say we have to make a decision without the data, just feels wrong to me. I think we need the data.
Commission, can I just make one quick little comment? If it's up to the chair and the, and the commission, it might be, this might be an appropriate time to see what the applicant's timing is for the submission of the architectural review drawings. They may be ready, they may be poised with that package, and if they are, maybe a short discussion on how they feel about doing these together.
All right, so I'm gonna reopen the public comment, let the applicant speak first, and then, obviously, whoever has to answer. All right, you understood the question?
Hi again. So, we're ready to submit architectural plans. I think delaying this and not knowing how many square foot we can put in will significantly delay this. We've already had our application in for about two years. We've gotten back comments on two separate rounds after plans were submitted in full, a complete package was taken in, and the comments that came back did not address any of this. So we are just finding out about this requirement, after two years of submitting this and getting back comments. So, when Lori went to the city, or came in initially, she was not told about these requirements, and now we've been working on this for years. All we're asking for now is the size. When we come back, and we have our architectural plans, and we have our color board, and we can show you what the roof line is, and the character of the home and the landscape, and how everything is going to look, at that point, if everyone is unhappy with it, it doesn't match the character at all, so be it. We'll work to make it work in the neighborhood, but right now, we're just asking for the square footage, and I don't think a small home equals an ugly home. I live in a 600 square foot home. It's beautiful. The neighbors love it, it fits in great, we can make it work. Size doesn't matter that much.
That was my, my comment, but, yeah. But that's the thing, like, we don't, we don't know now, right? So-
But we can find out, and, and the point of this meeting was not to say, tell us our home is ugly or not, or it fits or not. The point is to look at this lot and say, this lot is sloped significantly, we want to get Lori a home, we want to put housing in. The state passes something, it seems like every four months, saying, get us housing, ADUs, SB9, SB9 with lot splits. Now you can build four homes on this one lot where you could normally have one. So let us have one home at the end of a cul-de-sac, that's not even really across from anyone, and is adjacent to another lot that Lori also owns, that no one's going to see anyway. It's not like we're building a cathedral at the end of this, we're just putting a small home at the end of a road that's not even adjacent to Hickory itself.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Please.
Hi, and this is Carol Burgess again. I'm a little confused, because I thought all of this was public information, all the, all the conditions, the square footage requirement, now I'm hearing that that wasn't understood, so, I, I don't know.
Thank you. Please.
Yeah, referable, referable to what my wife just said, this is public information. For 30 years, the ad, the realty ad that Mrs. Pearson answered to look at that property stated, you have to contact the city of Lompoc for any conditions that might be attached to this, that's her problem, that's not my problem. I was also told by individuals within the planning department that she knew, knew full and well about all of these before she purchased the property, but she chose to do it anyway. We have evidence of that, because she hesitated when she bought it. She bought it, she went, made the motions of buying it first, she backed out of it, probably because she thought, oh, maybe I shouldn't do it against the conditions, maybe they won't lift him for me. And then she came back and bought it anyway, and I could be wrong about this, but my interpretation of that is, I don't have the money to do it right, I don't have the money to do it the way it's supposed to be done, but I love this lot. Well, you know what? A lot of other people love that lot, too. It's one of the most beautiful lots, and beautiful view lots in the city. So why does she get to have it when she can't afford to have it? Why do we have to make special, special arrangements for her, so she can afford to live in this neighborhood? And when this young lady says, it doesn't matter what size home it is, and I like my 600 square foot home, well, I like my 3,300 square foot home, too, I like it a lot, and I wouldn't like a 600 square foot home. And we all have dreams, why is it that my dreams, Susan's dreams, Joan's dreams, why is it that you step on our dreams to help her with hers? And when did the city get in the business of lowering the price of, of homes, so that she could afford to buy it? Somebody else could build there. She can build where she can buy, that's the way Americans work. If you have the money, you can live here, if you don't, you live over here. She can put her home somewhere else, where it fits in the neighborhood. This does not fit in our neighborhood, and I don't feel obliged to lower the price of the construction for it. It can be built the way we, we said in 1994. The, the people in your positions at that time and the staff, they did an excellent job when they researched this. I wanted it to be 2,500, that was a compromise, in fact, without those restrictions, that property wouldn't be there. That was a hillside when I moved here, that was a hillside. And with these restrictions, they got permission to develop it with cut and fill into those two little lots. And that's how it got started in the first place. If it went, if they didn't agree to those to begin with, it would still be a hillside, it wouldn't even be a lot, and we wouldn't be here, so.
Thank you.
Lori Pearson? I didn't know the restrictions. No, I did, I, I'm not gonna talk to you.
Please refrain to cross-talk, please.
I called the city, I asked them, I asked my realtor, I asked everybody, because I wasn't gonna buy it if I had to have, I can't live in a 2,250 square foot house, it's ridiculous. And Suzie, who owned it before me, said, I backed out because it was too much money for me, and then she lowered it if I bought the both, both of the properties. I bought Mango and Hickory. And Mango, I will agree, can have a 2,250 square foot house on it. It's got a big platform, and it doesn't slope as steep, and it could handle it. There's also sewer lines that were put in there, there's cable, electrical, water, everything is on that property, and the city didn't have any of that for me to look at. So I knew it was there, and I figured, well, and, and, and the sewer man, Don Mars, we went up there, and we poured dye down the pipes, he had his guys down in that sewer, at the bottom of the hill, and it all works. And so I said, well, the sewer's in, all the utilities are, are there. So I figured, okay, I, I can, she went way down on her price, because she just wanted to get out of it, finally. I backed out, because it was too much, and then six months went by, she kept refusing to sell it for less, and my realtor went back, and I said, have her, I'll, I'll offer her this, and she took it. And she lives in Colorado now. And the top lot I always wanted, because it's small, and I want a small home, and it's at the end of a cul-de-sac where nobody sees it, and the liquor store guy that built that big mansion, that's that picture up there, didn't want to build that big mansion, he wanted just a one-story building, and now, and the city made him do a big two-story, and all the neighbors are mad, because it's blocking all their views. So I'm not here to block anybody's views or hurt anybody, it's at the end of a cul-de-sac, I own Mango, and a house, a big house can go on that property, but I didn't know any of the restrictions, because they didn't even have a map of the property when I purchased it. There was, there was nothing. So I just took a chance, I figured it's got the sewer, I talked to the electrical guys, the water guys, I met them out there, I did everything, and I purchased it. And Suzie gave me a really good price for both, so I purchased it.
Thank you. Would you like to, to, yes, absolutely. If you can come to the podium, please, and state your name for the record.
My name is John Johnson, and I live at 1313 East Hickory. I am the owner of the easement across the front of my property, to access 1301 East Hickory. There is a blatant mistake, if anyone would like to correct it, on my property, it is almost 4,000 square feet, the exact amount is 3,586.30 square feet. I would like that corrected, and I would like to correct the statement about our new neighbor. None of us write in that neighborhood that we're talking about. We're not unhappy with him, or what he built, and it's the first I've ever heard that he was forced to build a two-story home. So I think some of the facts here are not correct, and I definitely object to the request, and I will state, and maybe no one will like what I'm going to state, recently, right near me, a hillside, exactly like the one next to me, just rolled down the hill and on down the street, and I do not feel that the 3, 1301 has been compacted correctly, and it might slip down the hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we take note of the mistake that needs to be corrected?
The mistake regarding the home size?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if that's gonna come into play, we're just wanting to basically provide, you know, what the records from the county, we don't control the county records, so.
Okay, so this is a county record mistake? Okay. Anyone else? All right, so seeing no one rises, we're gonna close, uh, public comment again. Okay, so it looks like the architectural review is, will be about ready to go. What is the direction here?
Well, I could remake my motion, but it's just gonna get tied for a second, but I, I make the motion, we bring this, continue this to a time when the architectural review is available, to be viewed.
I will second that. Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bridg?
Aye.
Commissioner Braxton?
No.
Commissioner Choney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
No, okay, so, but still, two no's.
All right, we're still split.
Oh, what's our compromise here? What's our compromise?
I'm with you, what's our compromise? Because it's not, these people need to move forward, obviously.
Right.
I mean, I, I have what I think, I mean, if, if I'm here, and if I was the applicant, I would just put the lot for sale and sell it. Right, this isn't, wouldn't be a place where I would want to live in retirement, if, if there's all of this turmoil, right? It's, you're trying to downgrade a lot's size to provide a home. It's disheartening to me, because I feel that there's a stigma, and I have to use the word stigma, that- It's disheartening to me because I feel that there's a stigma, and I have to use the word stigma, that a smaller house brings ugliness, which I don't feel that that's the case. And I just, I really feel that if the individual's been two years in the process, right, and has gone on this journey, and now is here at this journey, I'm willing to go with the two of your recommendations, but I feel that at this point, we're doing a disservice that no additional fees, right, should be charged to this applicant.
Can we do that?
No, you cannot. Sorry. Only the council can waive our fees, so the council approved the fees for architectural design, review of design, so now the fine commission can't waive those fees.
So, you know, I'm sensitive to what you say. I've gone through the long process and hated every minute of it. So I am very sensitive to what you say, and I, but I also am sensitive to the fact that people bought into an area with those covenants in place, and whether they knew about it or not, they were there. And I've been burned by not knowing things before, and so it just seems out of respect. Because the path we're on, if we're honest, is they're going to come in with a very pretty design, and we're going to approve it. We're going to let it go through.
Exactly, and any one of them could have come in previously and requested an amendment as well.
Yes, and we, I think we'd have had the same problem here.
Exactly.
So I'm hesitant to do it out of respect for the people that feel they did it in good faith. They purchased, they knew what the covenants were, they thought, you know, it's kind of like an HOA kind of thing to me. And so it seems reasonable to me that the architect bring it in, and we look at it and say, no, it's not ugly, and approve it, because that's where I think we're heading. But I can't just do it blind, so.
That's, that's exactly my sentiment and the reason why I was willing to entertain this, this, this direction. We need to be considered of all involved here. And yes, we are, we are doing a disservice to the applicant. I think the first disservice to the applicant was the fact that she didn't know that this condition existed. Whether that's true or not, I mean, I believe that's true, but I mean, whether that's a misunderstanding of sorts or what it was, but clearly she was not given all the information, and that is a major disservice on part of the city. But we also need to not make a disservice to the people that have bought into this community with certain expectations of what that, that community was going to look like and feel like. And I absolut, this is, this was my first point. It is true, no, a, a, a small house does not mean an ugly house. Like I said, there's, there's a lot of small houses, they're, they're incredibly beautiful, and add to the feel of a community. But that's what I want to see before I make, I make this decision.
I just, as Commissioner Braxton said, we are doing a disservice to this applicant. I just feel that it's all about the aesthetic. Like I said, we're going to go through a second approval. If she, we're going to go through the second approval, and at that point, we'll say if it meets it or not. But I don't understand why we can, we can't just do the square.
Because if, again, this is my opinion, if you do the square footage, we're giving carte blanche to the applicant to submit whatever they want to submit, and I know they're submitting a really pretty design, but conceptually, we're saying, all right, go ahead, go build whatever, put whatever you want in there.
But we're not, because we have to approve it.
Yes, we, we have to approve it, but I just feel like if we, if we, if we say yes today, we are creating a precedent.
I feel we've already done that on multiple projects. So what makes this project any different than other projects that we've had applicants come? Right, because the bottom line is, I, that's, I, I'm just, unless I don't think or fire right, that the approval is, is to downgrade the square footage of the lot, not to sit here to say, look and feel what it's going to look like. Like Brian indicated that right before we started, like, we've opened Pandora's box, and we're stuck on that Pandora's box. So it's like, what's in the resolution that's in the bigger package is about the, the lot size.
This is.
Well, I'll go back to my point on, and you've been here a while, you've seen the rug, and that rug moves. And, and we get in a condition where we do not have the power. So the minute you give it up, you're not going back. And if they come in and some state law has been passed, and now you cannot approve or disapprove structures based on their architectural view, you're going to be stuck, and you're going to be sitting here going, well, I didn't really think it was going to happen. But it happens, and we, I've seen it on Rena, I've seen it on our general plan, I've seen it on individual projects that come in here. What we think we're establishing, we get told at the next bite that, no, you no longer have the rights to do that. You, you heard it about the ADUs. Two years ago, we could have said, no, we're not going to put an ADU on that lot. You can't say that anymore. Now, anybody can come in and put an ADU right in your backyard, and there's not a damn thing you can do about it. So, so kind of fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. And I feel like I'm, if I vote for this to go forward without some leverage, then I'm just setting myself up to be fooled again. So it's not that I disagree with you in principle, I just disagree with you in the reality of this world we seem to live in.
But the, the other part of that reality is that we're, we're leveraging a requirement 30 years ago, right? We're referencing, right, we're referencing a meeting, and we're referencing a ordinance or an adoption amendment to that, right? So for 30 years, that could have been reviewed and validated, right? Now we're here 30 years later, and it's being questioned, right? It's being asked.
Well, those people out here put their faith in that if you made a requirement, you would have to live by it. And now we're going to carte blanche. I mean, there's no question in my mind.
But I go.
That it's going to go forward if it meets the architectural review. All of those people are going to feel they've been treated unfairly.
But by not allowing this, every other citizen in town, right, that we've not done this for, but we're doing it for this, right? We've done them unfairly. Right, that's where, I'm an all or, I'm an all or none, right? So that's where I'm very concerned is, there's other things that are forced down people's throats that, that come from a requirement perspective of housing, that it just, it's very unfair.
I think that if, if, if that were true, and if there were people that are concerned about all these other instances that you're mentioning, they would come to the meetings, and they would voice, voice those concerns, and we would listen. We haven't seen that. We, we're seeing this for this neighborhood because these people took the time to come here and, and, and tell us why they don't think this is right.
I mean, we've had written correspondence.
Yeah, but we've had written. We've written correspond, yeah, but, I mean, yes, but the, the difference between getting a letter and, and showing up and, and talking is, to me, you know, to be concerted, and, and so.
So, so here's where we're at, guys. We can pass it, we can fail it, whatever, you know. And to me, it seems like the, the compromise that Commissioner Gonzalez was referencing is the middle one. Well.
Which was brought up by, by, by Brian. It was your idea, Brian, thank you. I mean, seriously, I'm not being sarcastic. Thank you.
That's a middle-of-the-road answer to me.
I mean, the other thing is, is we can't come to a general consensus because we have four votes, right? And this decision would go to city council. I mean, I think that that's, for them to hear and review this, right, I think there's a lot of people on there.
Is that what happens?
Well, we're asking you tonight to make a decision. If the applicant, if for some reason you decide to deny the applicant's request, then, or approve, approve, sorry. If you approve the request to amend it, the neighbors could appeal, and then it would go to council.
No, but I mean, like, if we cannot, if we're split and cannot reach a decision, is that, is that, what is the process in that case?
I don't know if we can bypass the commission, but maybe your attorney can.
Generally, when you can't come to a consensus, the, the motion dies until you can, unless you have a tiebreaker. Since we have an open seat, it's either someone takes on that seat and breaks the tie, or someone reconsiders their vote on their motion. But we could also go back and see whether this can go back to, or this can go up to the city council. But generally, it would, it would go through the appeals process, whether that be through the applicant or through the neighbors that appealed the decision that's made either tonight or another time.
So is the net effect, if we don't come to a decision, then the applicant will not be able to process?
Right, if, if the motion fails, then the standard is basically a no, and the item doesn't move forward.
There's a reason I mention that at this point, right? There's, there's four people on the dais, good, bad, or indifferent, whether we, whether we approve it or not approve it, right? There's going to be potentially an appeal. So this is going to go to city council because of that appeal process. So that's, with all of the facts that I've written down on here, whether it's a yes or a no, there's still, to me, my heart's telling me there's going to be an appeal. So it's really kind of out of our hands at this point. If we're at a deadlock, it's going to have to go to them because there's a, there's five. There's one extra vote that's up there that, it's, either way, it's going to go to an appeal.
One other suggestion, we do have another item, we have two more items. So if you're having a hard time making some progress, we could take the next item and come back. But I don't know if that's going to necessarily help the situation, but we do have two more items, so just wanted to remind you.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break for, yeah. Yeah, and we reconvene back. The, the meeting. Do you have any new information, Mr. Amer Garcia?
If, if the commission wants, they can make a motion to have the city council review it, or we could go through the administrative process in the code and have either the applicant or the neighbors appeal the decision.
When they appeal it, it goes to council?
That's correct.
I, yeah. Doesn't feel, doesn't feel right that we don't, we're not making a decision, that we are, we are, we are, you know, saying, you know what? City council, deal with it. It just doesn't feel right.
In my opinion, I just think that we're trying to make an exclusive neighborhood. And I know they knew what they bought into in the beginning, which is why they bought those homes. But at any point, anyone could have come in and requested to amend these conditions, which, like you said, we would be going through this back then. But this is someone who wants to build a house in an empty lot. We need homes in Lompoc. So I just think we should approve this square footage size.
Do you want to make out a motion?
I motion to adopt resolution number 1,00424, approving an amendment to the conditions of approval for LOM 475.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Bridge?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Braxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Chione?
Aye.
And Gonzal, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
All right, motion passes three, one. We're going to move to hearing item number two, Wolf Tentative Parcel Map, LOM 640. Can we please have a staff report?
Okay, just one second, we got our staff member that just needs to change chairs.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the commission. Tonight, we have LOM 640 for the Wolf Tentative Parcel Map.
Excuse me, can you please, can you please don't do that? Well, please, this is not, if you, we need to take it outside, take it outside, that's it.
The project is located at 315 East Chestnut. It is in the industrial zone, it is surrounded by industrial zone and a residential across the street. The project is a tentative parcel map to merge eight existing non-conforming lots totaling approximately .69 acres, and then is to subdivide the .69 acres into two lots. Both of those lots would be .34 acres in size. This shows the Assessor Parcel Map identifying the old non-conforming lots, which will be integrated, and then the new lot right here, half of this side, and then half of this side. There was a alley at one point coming down, but that has since already been abandoned. These are some existing pictures. The one on the top left is looking down Chestnut, looking at the sidewalk and the property, a subject site. The bottom one is looking into the property from the east. This is the proposed parcel map. As indicated, parcel one will take this side, and parcel two over here. There is already access right here off of Chestnut, and then over here on F Street. The project is categorically exempt from review pursuant to section 15315 for minor land division. That concludes staff's presentation. It is recommended to adopt a resolution approving LOM 640 for the parcel map or provide other direction.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the staff report. Any questions before Commissioner Bridge?
Put the map back up, or the plot line. So what happens to that strip?
Which strip? Are you talking about this in here? That is the, where the alley once had an easement there, but that's already been abandoned.
So it was just an easement?
It was my understanding, yes. So it was an easement for an alleyway, but that has been abandoned already.
So will the two lots divide along the dividing line?
Yeah, so that line right there is the proposed line right in the middle there. And then here's one lot, and then the other lot right there. But yes, that line in the middle there.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're going to open for public comment. Let the applicant speak first, if they're here. Can you please state your name for the record?
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kyle Hirth, I'm with Orchid Survey Company.
I'm with Orchid Survey Company, representing the owner, Mr. Wolf. I prepared the tentative parcel map. Very straightforward map. No development is being proposed at this time. He just wants to split the lot into two. It's currently leased one portion to one leasing and the other portion. So he's just going to go along those lines. The building is just a storage building with no utilities besides electricity at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is zoned commercial?
Industrial.
Industrial. Does industrial allow mixed use?
No. When you say mixed use, you mean like how our code defines mixed use? It's not, it doesn't, it's not like a mixed use zoning. It's just industrial and then you have to apply to the uses that are allowed in the industrial zone.
So I don't pretend to be an expert here, but so maybe I'll just ask it as a, could someone put houses on there?
Oh, no.
Could they put houses on the second story?
Houses on second story?
Well, industrial on the bottom and...
Oh, no, it's just industrial. It's no, housing is not a permitted use in the industrial zone.
Okay. I make a motion. Will you approve this?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes four, zero. Thank you very much. And we're going to move to item number three, discussion and status of the general plan, environment justice element, GP-2024-0001. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chair, members of the commission. As we know, last month, we presented a draft of the environmental justice element. It's a new element to the general plan. And I was just going to real quickly kind of summarize. The minutes are long, 18 pages. So I want to kind of highlight some items that the commission asked for us to look at. As part of your packet, there's a very short, it's two to three pages memo from our consultant as well that I'm going to talk about. So the meeting last month, the commission expressed some concerns regarding this draft element. One was the organization of the goals and policies. They felt like it wasn't organized in a way where there's the items of concern in the city. There were several items. We can go over those a little later if you'd like to. And then regarding those specific areas of concern, there was no specific goals and policies to address things like lead paint, pesticide use and exposure throughout the city. So sure myself and the consultant, we looked at some potential on how to address that. So first, the recommended revision would be to take the document, which is now organized into three different areas, environmental justice, access to health care and healthy foods, and civic engagement, and change it to this. We'd have a section called pollution exposure, healthy food access, physical activity, public facilities, safe and sanitary housing, we talked about that, and then civic engagement. So we go through real quickly. I know it's been a long night. So we go through some of the proposed revisions that are in the memo from the consultant. So regarding lead paint, that was a discussion about, okay, we acknowledge that older homes have lead paint, but we don't really address it. So we're proposing to add a new program to seek funding for lead remediation and rehabilitation. And we looked and saw, you know, cursor review, we saw that there are some programs out there. Specifically, we saw one from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Lead Hazard Reduction Demonstration Program. So that new program will require the city to seek funding to address that concern. So another one, we talked about pesticide use. And I didn't really want to get into the whole notion of not just the disadvantaged communities, but the whole city and a lot of areas are also experiencing pesticide, like drift or pesticide exposure and things like that. So we think that adding a new goal could address that in two new policies as well that address pesticide education as well as industrial truck idling. So another one was regarding physical activity, safe and sanitary housing. We talked a little bit about how this a lot of times is a code enforcement item. But at the same time, we wanted to acknowledge that we could address it in the environmental justice element through a new goal, a new policy that addresses both physical activity and promote walking and biking and things like that. And then also a new goal and two policies to ensure living conditions are healthy and safe. Then you'll see below here that we would have to continue to enforce standards that promote safe and sanitary housing as well as substandard conditions. So those are the changes that we're proposing. It's in the memo from the consultant. But I didn't want to ignore there were kind of some side issues, but very important nonetheless. So one of them was, well, let's continue this item to see what happens at the special general plan workshop meeting that was supposed to occur on May 9th, literally the following day. Unfortunately, that did not occur and it may not occur this year for a variety of reasons I don't want to really get into. But part of it is staffing, part of it is funding. It's also an election year. We'll leave it at that. Proposed goals, policies, and measures are citywide. There were some concerns that the focus was only on the disadvantaged communities or those areas, those tracks that had the concern. So I want to emphasize that all of the proposed goals, policies, and measures are citywide. There was also some talk about the capital improvements plan. I looked at it very briefly. The plan is from 2023 to 2029. I think Commissioner Bridge might have brought this up. I did see an error. The implementation of that, I think, was supposed to be 2022. So we need to sharpen our pencil and change that because this isn't even adopted yet. So the capital improvements plan didn't start until 2023. It is updated every two years. Our budget cycles are every two years. So after talking to the finance department, they told me every two years and so we would be looking at this during those updates. There was also some talk about the risk management plan, about, you know, is this required to do a study? And we confirmed, no, it wasn't necessarily a study. And then there's also talk about substandard housing. I think we've addressed that in the proposed new goal and policy. So that, taking that into consideration, the next steps that I wanted to ask the commission to consider tonight is if they agree with some of the changes or all of the changes, we'll work with the consultant to update the element. And then we'll also do a formal update to post to the website. And then our suggestion, recommendation is to bring it back, not next month because we need a little more time, bring it back to the August 14th, 2024 meeting. If you agree with the general approach, I understand that when we bring it formally back, you might have some more comments, which you could also make those comments and recommend the council make those additional changes if you feel like the approach and the revisions that we suggest are not enough. So that does conclude my presentation and just looking for some input and discussion regarding this, these revisions.
Thank you, Mr. Hoberson. Commissioner Bridge, you have...
Could you go back to the healthy slide? By the way, this is, it's obvious you addressed a lot of our concerns, so...
Oh, you know what? I think I passed it. So there's lead paint and there's that one. Is it this one?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I kind of followed it till I got to the last half of the last line. And I'm not quite understanding how that...
Well, we can go ahead and actually read the memo that the consultant put together. So let me read that real quickly. Okay. So on page three of the memo attached to the, your staff reports, it would, this is what we're proposing. The new goal would say, ensure all residents experience living conditions that are healthy and safe. I realize that's broad. So the policy, a new policy for safe and sanitary housing would say, the city shall establish and enforce standards that promote safe and sanitary housing. And then in addition to that, a new policy says rehabilitation and preservation. The city shall encourage the rehabilitation of substandard conditions and preservation of affordability for dwellings owned and occupied by lower-income households citywide.
Yeah, that's what it says up there. I still don't understand how preservation of affordability housing occupied by lower-income household improves safe and sanitary housing. I'm, you don't have to answer it tonight. I'm just saying that it seems like a non-sector to me.
Yeah, it does seem a little repetitive. So we could revise the wording, update the wording to be a little more...
And I'm not sure how it applies, so I'm not...
Reservation of affordability, I think, is where I think we struggle to...
Yeah, so I mean...
Does that mean?
So, for example, a lot of, not a lot, but there are, I want to say 10 to 15 developments in town that have affordability covenants. So that would be part of that. At HCD, you probably recall, we went over the housing element. They wanted to make sure that those developments that have those affordability covenants are protected.
And I fully understand that in the general affordability plan that we just went through. I'm having trouble connecting it to environmental justice of the concerns that we highlighted, that maintaining affordability of dwelling units is, that seems like a non-sector to me. I don't get the connection.
I think there is...
It's a good goal. I'm not saying it's bad.
I think this is kind of unfortunate and I don't like to maybe admit this, but sometimes affordable housing can, lower-cost housing can sometimes have deferred maintenance and sometimes can run into more issues of sanitary housing than, say, market rate that's getting a premium cost and maybe... I agree with that 100% and that's what the first two lines of that policy relate to. But we'll be open when we bring it back to sharpen that wording. Absolutely. Okay.
Any other questions?
I have one question that I did not ask last month and I feel bad that I did not ask it last month. But it's just a general overview question that when we talk about the, and I've been stewing on it because I felt bad that I didn't, and my notes ask it. When we talk about the topics of the focus areas, okay, from when the state brings that down to us, are those the only five focus areas? Or there are additional focus areas that we're not looking at? That we've, we're accepting these five focus areas in the plan? Or there are any residual focus areas that the state has?
No, no, we're focusing on those areas, the community of focus. So we're focusing on those tracks in the city. Remember, that's not our data. That's from the state and the federal government based on those two databases. So no, that is the focus.
The food access, the physical activity, those are, they're being driven down from the feds to us, right? To enact this then to the city.
Well, not necessarily the categories. It's those areas that are disadvantaged, whether it's income, education, ethnicity, all those different factors.
So I get that piece. But like, and I think I probably didn't clarify my question good enough. So is there any other topics of focuses out there that may not be in this document, like?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
But when the consultant comes back to the next meeting, they could probably elaborate on that a little bit more. They've written many of these elements.
Okay, okay.
This is my first one. So I'm not going to claim to know all those other areas or categories.
Because I don't know, like, if there's other focus areas, like, are we missing something that really, really does apply, right? Like, that we can maybe bring out or add in, right? If there was something that we could be missing. Because I would think there could potentially be more because we're only listing six. So I've been trying to dig, but I just haven't dug enough to see if there were any more focus areas. That's all I have, sorry, sir.
That's good. So what are we, are we supposed to make a motion here or?
No, no, there's no motion, no resolution. We're just simply asking one for a discussion. But we're looking for direction if we can bring this back in August and if you agree to the general approach that we're using here to make changes.
Okay, so this was all actually before the open comment and it was all, these were all questions. So now I'm going to open this for public comment. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Nick Gonzalez, Chair, Commission. So I'm very much disturbed with preservation of affordability for dwellings owned or occupied by low-income households. That's rent control or rent, kind of controlling rent. Or if you had preserve existing affordable covenants, that would stick to simply those projects that were designated low-income. That, in my opinion, is opening a big can of worms because if you have that in your element, then an outside group, which we're seeing right now throughout the county, could come in and demand that you meet that, that element that's within your general plan. That's what's happened to us in the past. The other item is, is I still, still very strongly with this environmental justice that we are still in our general plan demanding that the community and property within the city carry the brunt of exposure, pesticide exposure by having a buffer zone. I think it's about time that we shift that back to the polluter and not burden the residents and the community within the city, whether you have a monitoring program or you don't have all the shall do this, shall do that in regard to that buffer zone. I'm not saying that a buffer zone is bad, but I'm saying that to me, it's not environmental justice to force the town to have to succeed their health and their interests to a polluter, if in fact there is. And if it's a non-issue, then we'll see that. But I really would implore you to take a look at that. Our valley has fundamentally changed this last year. I spoke about it before with all the strawberries and the way of fumigants and things that are being used, you're not going to see for several years until they monitor again because it's a new crop. So those are not even reflected in the EPA, the Cal, Enviro EPA data because it's a new crop. And so I really encourage you to do that. And then I would look at affordability preservation to add to enforce. And then you go on and on. I'd take that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, actually, I should probably first check if there's anyone on the phone.
Nobody on the phone.
All right, so then I close open comment, bring it back to the commission. I feel like this is a good direction. I am also a little concerned about that language, but we can certainly make it more specific once it actually comes for approval. But I think the direction, it's like you were saying before, Commissioner Bridge, they've taken our concerns and they're working on it, so I think. Go ahead.
For, yes, good job. You listened and we see what our concerns that were addressed. But because you want our recommendations and what we feel for this, should we fix the wording on this now then?
I would wait until the actual meeting just because it'll be easier once you have the full element and you can see the context for everything.
I see, I mean, I know we beat this pretty hard at the last meeting. So I echo your echoes and your echoes on this. I'm getting a little warm and fuzzy, but there's still just the little tweaks that I think we get those little tweaks. I think we'll be good.
All right, so we don't have to make a motion. We can just close the item.
Yeah, and I'm just going to ask so you agree that it's suitable, even though there's going to be more comments and more revisions to bring it back in August?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all we're looking for.
Mm-hmm. All right, I'm going to close item three. Move to new business. Any new business? Move to new business, hey, new business?
None.
All right, I'm going to open for oral communications. This is when a chance to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Anyone?
Nicholas Gonzalez, Commissioner, Chair. Are we, I'm curious as to, and part of that's, I haven't gone on and written in the last month or so, but Rena, did we, is there an area where the letter or the response has come back yet for approval? And how far are we out on that approval?
About the housing element? I think that's going to be actually an update coming. It's one of the director's staff communications. So yeah, we'll talk about that. Anyone else? Anyone on the phone?
No one on the phone.
All right, I'm going to close oral communications. I'm going to go to written communications.
None, Chair.
All right, director's staff communications.
Okay, yeah, I do have a report on the housing element. So I just had a meeting with the consultant today and we looked at some amendments that HCD wants to see. So the amendments have been drafted into the housing element, specifically the needs assessment. So I looked at it. I think it looks fine. So we requested today a meeting, one more meeting with HCD to make sure they're, they agree and those changes are acceptable. Some of it has to do with the sites inventory. Just to give a quick little blurb, not to get in too much detail, but the state was questioning some of our sites inventory in regards to the Old Town commercials, so downtown, and then the mixed use zones. They felt like those zones were in the capacity of future residential uses might be a little too high. So we looked at that, made some changes. You're also going to see when it comes back that they want four stories. So four stories high in those zoning districts. So they want to see more capacity. They want to see more density. So we requested the meeting. I'm expecting the meeting in the next one to two weeks. And if that looks okay, we're going to submit it to the HCD again. And we're looking for kind of a clean letter that says this looks good. You've addressed our comments and essentially, and not so many words, they would say, if you make those changes and it's adopted, you will get a certified element. So how far are we away? I would say at least another two more meetings before we can bring it back to the commission to show you those changes and then your recommendation to the city council. So probably three more months between waiting that time, going to you and then council. So it's a bit of a process. I wish it was quicker. That concludes the general plan housing element update. I was just going to really quickly, not too much to say. Thank you for coming to the joint meeting with the city council last week. I think that it was productive. They kind of heard some of your concerns, some of your requests. It got a dialogue going between the two. So I just want to thank the commission for posing some good points and also kind of putting it in the lap of the council as far as some things that you would like to see, even though it may or may not be possible, whether it's forcing maybe development to kind of get going, projects that are sitting was expressed, or updating the code, et cetera. So I just wanted to express a thank you. It's good to see the two together to kind of brainstorm. So that's all I have for the director's staff communications.
Thank you, Mr. Harbison. Any commission requests? Mr. Bridge?
I enjoyed the meeting with the cities. It would have been nicer if we'd had an agenda so we knew we were expected to speak. Maybe that was obvious to everybody but me. I would like to request that similar to your general plan update that you're doing, that we hear the status of the County Bailey Corridor activities and if and when, or if there's any progress into that moving into the city. I know that, I don't know any details on it other than there's been a builder's remedy submitted. I don't even know if that's been pulled back, but that seems like on the edge of our city and I realize it's in the county, but I would certainly like to be kept abreast of what's going on there as much as you can and.
That's a really good point. How about if I add a reoccurring, it may not be every single meeting, but a reoccurring on the director's staff communications on the builder's remedy? We're making good progress. We had a meeting about two and a half, a little over two and a half weeks ago with the county and with LAFCO together, as well as the applicant who wants to build homes on that piece, the bodger. And we are, for the most part, we agree that that needs to be brought into the city and the city will condition any type of services like water, electricity. They need to come into the city before we agree to what they call a can of will serve letter. So I think that's really important. We dug in and it seems to be going well. So I can, like I said, put that on the director's staffs as we get new information. We don't have information every month, but I do know one thing that's, maybe I'm going a little too much into this, but this month they had to have all their studies delivered to the county in order to meet the builder's remedy requirements and timing. So I haven't heard anything, but I'm assuming they did. It has to be this month. I don't know the exact day, but it has to be this month to meet that deadline.
Well, I'm not suggesting anybody's delinquent or anything like that. I just, it's, it's a big deal for our city and I just would like, as a planning commissioner, to have some knowledge on it.
Absolutely.
Any other requests? Thank you very much. Then I think we're going to move for adjournment. I move that we adjourn to our next regular meeting at six thirty PM on Wednesday, July tenth, twenty twenty four. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. We are adjourned.